... And so the rest of the list, that's all started. So yeah, you're going to tax out on that.
Yeah.
That's going on.
I'm hopeful that we can jump on it. If you please, drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving back to...
Carol Pearson.
Dick Fraser.
President.
Brian Garrison.
Present.
Dale Seward.
Mike Chalk.
Present.
Thank you. The council has been presented with the minutes from the June 5 regular meeting. Are there any additions, contractions, deletions, or amendments to be made to this set of minutes?
I move into the line for the June 5, 2017 reading to the House.
Second. We have motion in the second to approve the minutes from the June 5 regular meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we'll move back to reports with committee force commissions and departments. Now Director Hammond is available to attend tonight. Do we have any questions for the department heads or the mayor?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Chief, Chief here. Chief here. Uh, we had Craig and Aaron have times put on their truck. I wondered why the two of the police officers, you know, have time, doesn't it?
So the markings on the SUV and the chief's vehicle?
Yeah.
I don't know if the chief's vehicle, the last time we had marked one, because he was driving a blue Bong. Uh, you expressing that you would like to see the SUV marked?
Yeah. And that's all I got.
Do you want to know if you want the SUV marked?
Yeah. I wanted the both marked. If it's feasible.
Um, I'm not, I don't know if you're sending them or what, but I'm not getting their attention.
Major report. I didn't have any sent this month. I've been busy and away from my office. I didn't have my opportunity to type in before South of June. I'll be back on it for July.
So they're not in here either?
There's nothing, no sending. Any further questions for department heads? There are none. Councilman Seuss, you provided a report from the area planning commission. Any questions, Councilman Seuss? All right, move next to report regarding community center project. Councilman Chalkley or Seuss?
Community.
An update?
What? Community center. Yes, uh, tonight I talked to the contractor and he is taking the brakes down tomorrow. He is getting ready to load steel and start putting the outside, uh, the rough steel on and then he's going to start on the walls. And he's finishing up all of the woodwork for the outside walls and that's where we're at right now.
Councilman Seuss, anything ahead?
No.
Any questions for the councilman?
Nope.
All right. Uh, we'll move next to other business. We have Mr. Mike Paddy here today. He's going to discuss his vision and update for softball complex. Any questions from the council? Mr. Paddy, you have to go.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Well, gentlemen, thanks for your time. Here's a drawing that kind of had done, the vision of having a park and ball field built. This is obviously in the wake of happy and liberty, with me my granddaughter. So really just wanted to take a few moments here, a few minutes, to really just express why I want to do this. I don't want the money for myself. This money's really come from the community. I just want to try to pour it back into the community. Thought a good way to do that would be a park. Obviously Libby loved to play softball, had for years, and again, I don't want the money for myself. It's really the community's money. I just look at myself as being a steward of that money and how can I redirect that back to the community? So that rendering of drawing done by RW Groves, um, really just here to open myself up. If you guys have any questions, tell you what my vision is, again, to build this ballpark and have it available for the public to utilize. So if there's any questions, uh, I've been out, obviously, on the news a lot. Can you hear me? Announced that I'm raising money to do that. A lot of fundraisers going on. Just need to kind of find a piece of property that's suitable to do this on. If I can work with the city to do that, that'd be a great, a great thing.
So the way this looks, Mike, with the main street and this 25, is this that piece of property out there?
Yes, yes, it was. That was the, the original intent, was kind of going after that. Obviously, it's in floodway. It really isn't a prime location to be dumping a quarter million dollars into, um, but it was land that was become available through, you know, from in the id over to DNR, from the state and back to the city, as you know. Now, like it's, you guys passed the motion a week ago to accept that land, or maybe a month ago. Like now you have right of entry, right of access to it. Um, and then, you know, through, basically, if you're reading the comment, you know, it kind of sounded like, yeah, maybe it wasn't the, one of the best spot, so I was here to open it up. Questions? Do you have questions for me when I have, I'm here.
Are you trying to totally fund it?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
When you're talking to your designers, is there, would it be elevated up so that you would?
Can't do that.
Can't change it because it's floodway. You have to have it out there.
Yeah, it's in floodway.
Yeah, can't change that elevation.
That's what we worked so hard on, when Shane and I, you mentioned, we went down, Julia was with us, we went down to the, uh, to DNR to meet with them. It was really to, to kind of push through the delineation of that property and see where we're, what the impact of the, you know, highway and everything had on that. And it's dead, dead in the floodway. It's, that property ranges anywhere from six to 12 feet, a little bit up there. So, I mean, it's, anytime you build along the water, expect to get wet, yeah.
And it's, I lived there for 15 years.
Yes, you did.
And it comes quick.
Yes.
I mean, it's just not, it's slowly, it's just like it does on, where you've been, it rises quick.
Well, you write Darrell Robinson Run, which is a big dump into that. See, I realize that.
But, you know, the, you read the thing, that's why ball dimes are where they're at. They're flooding Lake Andes right now, St. Toban. You have a meeting, see, it's just like, well, they take it over the golf course. Playing too costly at nineteen. Absolutely, it's, you know, a nice area.
It, it would be, it would be a beautiful spot as far as having a beautiful ball dime in there, but if you flood it out three years in a row, you know, or clean out all the endowments and everything that I have set aside and try to help fund this and keep this thing alive. So.
So I find a little peace.
I think, well, after, yeah.
Tony, have you had other options that you're looking at for property?
Oh, I'm always looking for options, absolutely.
But anybody?
Yeah.
Anybody willing to work with you? That's what I'm saying, you know, you get the Shulmans and all these people that donate and help.
I haven't had anybody specifically like that. There's been one private entity that reached out and then the mayor's reaching out as well. I mean, him and I've had several meetings, he's looking at other properties around the city as well. I've had Mr. Seuss, you come out to my house, we discussed an option, and that's certainly still an option out there on the table, I told you that day.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's no problem.
Yeah, I mean, I really like, I like the entrance with, I mean, I think that light up would be really beautiful, but I'm sort of right there with you about, you know, you can't, who knows? Some days it's, you know, we could be underwater and...
Well, I, like, again, I look at this as me being the steward of this money, albeit it's, it's being brought in mostly from our community, it's been a bunch of it, you know, and from day one, I've just put that into a secondary account. Now I've created the Carroll County Community Fund, worked with them to create an account there. That's where all the money's been going, all these fundraisers, that's exactly where I tell people to put it. Um, but I'm still going to be a good steward of that money. If it was my, I want to have it in my own pocket, but I want to, you know, take a quarter million of my own dollars and build something down there.
And as Jeff said, though, there's, I guess floodway's a little different because there's a lot of different sources out there that build parks on old land, old land mills and everything. You've got to use that land somehow if you can. I'd love to see it down there, but I just, I think it's a great idea, anything we can do to help along with it. I'm sure the mayor is, and I know I will.
Well, I appreciate that. Again, I'm here, I'm an easy guy to find, every news crew in the northern hemisphere here, has got my cell phone and gotten ahold of me, so, uh, reach out to them, ask me, I have nothing to hide, I'm just, right now, really heavily in fundraising mode, but I really do need a piece of property that's, that's suitable for this, to tie to the project. You know, I mean, it's one thing for me to go out, you know, hey, would you donate a hundred bucks to, to my plan of building ball field? Where are you going to put it? I have no idea, but I still need a hundred bucks.
You're at me.
Yeah, I, I, I don't solve that easy.
I just kind of hope that, as there's somebody out there that's willing to step up, I'm sure. I just wish they'd come back to you, because somebody wants to put back in this community to just make that move.
What are you saying, that you need like how many, like three acres or?
Sixteen to twenty. That site, that site down there is 27 acres, including the wood in the area that's down along the creek. The actual flat land used to be farm field, the areas used to be farm, this is a little over sixteen. It's all grown.
Yeah, because I was surprised that you could, that's pretty much complex.
Yes, you'd be surprised how many fields you could fit in, in a complex like, especially if you grow really some like that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Other people here, fast around, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's always been a dream, like, back in my boy was playing in whatever, like Manchester stuff, and you get in there, they're just beautiful.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, I've got renderings for that field as well. I've looked, I've done a lot of work, you know, a lot of late nights working on this stuff.
As you pull up the main street down in there, that zone, that land between our creek zone and the park building there, it's like, you have to mine. So you will, you don't have, you don't have as much good access and important things.
Yeah, actually, if you're looking at drawing here, you see that's biked up thirty-six feet back to the east to accommodate that. Because I talk to Will, he come over, him and everybody's.
But it's, it's a perfect spot, it's just not the right piece, right?
If you guys will fill that in about six feet, let me call. You get that past, you know, the, the DNR and, and FEMA.
But my main concern is, is that, the flooding, that's my main, because you have the deer creek on one side, and then you have what's called gut creek on the other side, which comes down through, and, uh, Mr. Myers back there, that water does get hot. In 2003, it got real hot. 2008, it got hot again. Uh, that's my main. Uh, I know that it's a nice area, you swat that fish and everything, beautiful water. But I figure actually building, buildings on, you know what I'm saying? And, uh, that would be my main concern, is, uh, once you get them all built, then they get flooded, of course, you know what that's like digging down here, uh, to clean them out and everything.
No, it, I wonder if you're well-sick.
And also, who, who will maintain mowing and that kind of stuff of the park? If, if, say, say this comes to reality, who will be in charge of mowing and everything of the park?
The park itself, and the mayor and I had kind of talked, and this is just kind of a gentleman's agreement, yeah, outside park, outside the ball fences would be maintained by the city. That would be their input to, inside the park, the building of the park and in the ball fields would be, would remain within the Delphi Drill, Rec Softball League and that nonprofit group.
Then how many acres are you talking, uh, that the city would have to mow, roughly?
Roughly between seven to ten is my guess.
Seven to ten acres?
Now, now the six acre, you're probably going to consume about six acres between the buildings, the walking, the parking, and the ball fields themselves. Anything inside the fences would be mowed by, you know, take, maintained by the rec league.
Aaron, I have a question for you. What would that be if they added another seven, say, seven to ten acres on to what you are mowing now? Do you, do you have any idea what that would be?
I would have to have some help. You would need more employees than you can do with your staff.
Well, I think with tournaments, regular seasons, you've got a boys' size league there with 300 fence, you got two girls, you hold tournaments all year round like the rest of them, amount of people that's going to come to town, you're generating a lot of money right there.
Right.
That goes back into taxes, it's coming back into the city.
What I'm trying to do is, uh, we have forty-some acres that he's mowing now, and I'm wondering if we're going to have to maybe hire another part-time person, or another full-time person for him to be able to take care of what, you know, he be taking care of.
You don't believe that would be worth the memory of these two young girls?
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying it wouldn't be worth, I'm just asking.
Well, like, what's he saying? What's it cost us to pay, he's got to be free, that's, that's, it's not like, he's not, he's not. He's not saying anything about the memory of any girls.
I'm just saying that the park itself would be a good thing in our, we, we, we as the city, put our time forward to help mow and keep this a beautiful place, that's a good thing.
It's a terrible thing to say, I don't know, get off your high horse.
Anyway, can I finish, please? Uh, would, would, would you probably have to hire another part-time person?
I probably would, yeah, more to, I mean, we got rid of a lot of the now stuff, we want to take care of our own, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
Probably have to buy a new one or two.
Well, I mean, that, you know, that's a problem, but I was just, you know, throwing that out there and asking questions, maybe some questions if some of the people have it out. That's all, you know? I'm all for something coming to town like this. I just want to make sure they're in the right place.
Yeah, I, I, uh, those are great questions, and I'm, I'm not asking for permission, but it really is to spur discussion.
Sure.
That's really what it is, because as we go down this path further, at some point, I'll be building a ball field. That's one thing I'll take. I use private property that's already been owned up, it's not in the greatest location, but I've been to a lot of ball fields over my years, and sometimes they're out in the middle of nowhere. You drive around a curve and up over a hill, and by golly, there it is, four miles, five miles outside of town. You get there, there's 300 cars in the parking lot, which is full of kids, packed full. So I'm not worried about location, location so much, but could I work with the city, you know, could I do something like that? That's what I'm here, just to explain, like, if you guys have a, a great idea, something that comes about, again, reach out to them. I'm not a hard guy to get ahold of. But your question back to the mowing, uh, forty-five dollars an acre, you can actually have everything subbed out. About seventy-five hundred dollars a year, you can mow a ten acre park. Because the larger you go, the price comes down. I got quotes on that, too. Done my homework, got all my financials laid out, it's what I do for a business, been doing it for 30 years, so, I know profit loss statements, cost analysis, I've done it all, trust me, probably wouldn't be putting this out there like I am.
Well, I think we're all for it, and I understand once you get the land and so what, there's going to be a lot of things to be worked on, we all know that. I think we're all willing to look at it like that.
Good. Any further questions for Mr. Paddy?
No.
Mr. Paddy, I gave out your cell phone number to the council members in case they stumble upon something.
Absolutely. Yeah, that or channel 13, either one had it.
Anything further? Thank you again, Mr. Paddy.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move next to new business. Uh, first item of business, this ordinance 2017-10, read by title alone, ordinance admitting Title V, Chapter 52, Section 55, allowing an increase in seasonal wastewater flows applies to users. The council has received a memorandum regarding this ordinance proposal. Are there any questions or discussion from the council? Uh, if you see, I should have provided you with, um, a response from Butler Family and Cypher to Indiana Packers Corporation's original request, or not original, but the original one this year, dated April 12, 2017. Um, it's a revision to their request from 2016 to allow for 1.4 million gallons a day, daily maximum discharge on any single day, um, averages weekly and monthly for 1.2 million gallons a day. This increased flow would be from July 1 to September 30. Uh, we limited it for three years. It was just something over the summer. Um, they could use more, I guess, influence coming to us, they could get rid of a lot more wastewater more quickly. Uh, wouldn't increase the loading, so actually the content of what's sent to us is just the flow that increases. Um, Butler Family and Cypher provided a response that shows that it fits within our Iban permit, and we still have 150,000 gallons per day that we have available before we reach our 90% permitted rate, at which point I then would probably say something to us about it.
Well, I think it's important that we cooperate with IPC, and if it leaves the regulations would be complex that, I would, would that we accept the request.
Read a motion, uh, assuming that's the passage of ordinance 2017-10 on first reading. Do we have a second? Sir. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would ask the council if they feel comfortable to suspend the rules of procedure to allow for adoption of this ordinance on the same day. Once the ordinance is adopted, Indiana Packers Corporation can approach Iban because they have a pre-trial permit, they may impart an environmental management, uh, argument as to see, uh, the city's ordinance before they're going to revise IPC's permit. Is there any discussion on the suspension of the rules of procedure to allow for adoption on the same days in adoption?
I move that they suspend rules and pass it on all the readings.
Sir, read motion in the second to suspend rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same days in adoption. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the ordinance 2017-10 be approved on second reading.
Sir, read motion in the second to approve ordinance 2017-10 on second reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move this 2017-10 be approved on third final reading.
Sir, read motion in the second to approve ordinance 2017-10 on third final reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. I'll move on next to resolution 2017-5, read by Title I, creation of a reserve or depreciation account for the purpose of capital improvements or replacements out of operating profits from the operation of the airport. The council should have received the memorandum regarding this resolution, as well as the Indiana Code that allows the creation of this reserve or depreciation account. Um, and the reasoning why, uh, the Board of Aviation Commissioners and myself have asked for this account to be created. Are there any questions regarding resolution 2017-5, the memorandum, or the Indiana Code provided?
Well, I think it will, um, make it easier to track what the fuel costs and income are in hanger. I think it's something that we end up having to deal with, so.
Do we have any further discussion?
Did you have any?
Yeah, so you're going to take it out of just buying fuel and repair on hangers to just any capital project?
Well, I guess it's any profits generated from the airport, so any revenue they derive on top of taxes. So, hang it right over.
You have a large loan from the hanger.
Correct, and it would still be budgeted through the city council, and it would be spending down appropriations within reason. Uh, I believe they started, uh, this year with a hundred and two, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in their rotary fund. Uh, I can't, I don't remember.
But right now their rotary fund is separate, so there are fuel sales, and it will be shortly, but there are fuel sales and there are gas sales that are going in, and your loan payment comes out of that rotary fund. So you've got a liability on that rotary fund. I, I understand what you're doing, and I don't have a problem, but should there not be a limit to what can be spent so that we don't get in trouble with what we finance?
No, I think the city council during budget season would appropriate the funds that in the next year could be spent out of that account.
And what was, how did it come about, you guys, that's a, on the airport board?
They were discussing their budget, um, and they presented with the financials for the rotary fund, um, you know, that they had a hundred and twelve thousand that last year they reseeded in fifty-six thousand and spent forty-three thousand. Um, and they're desired to be able to use some of that money so that they're, they're on the taxpayers of the city of Delphi isn't as great, so if they can spend down some appropriations that they're bringing in excess funds, they would like to do that.
Spend it down for what? For necessary expenses or?
No, the, the state statute requires it to be on capital expenses or replacements of capital items. Um, so what, uh, they would propose for next year in their budget is spending, because they've got a 5% match to, um, they expect two FFA loans to finish, or FAA grants to finish out the runway expansion. Um, the total of that's close to 57,000, so they would ask that 28,000 come from excess funds, and 28,000 come from the general budget.
Uh, Mayor, would this mean that they would not have to come before the council for additional appropriations and stuff like that?
Yes, sir.
Would they just make, would they just take and come before the Board of Works and say, this is what we need and this is what we get?
The Board of Aviation Commissioners acts as the board of works for the airport department, so they would be the administrative body in charge of the airport. They are still required to come to the city council, the legislative, fiscal body of the city, for all appropriations. So the budget would still be approved by the city council. They would just like to be able to ask for funds out of this account so they could spend down appropriations for some of the money that they need to operate the airport and make capital purchases.
Aye.
Any further questions?
How do you see it being handled correctly?
If it truly comes back, but I was always told that the airport board had total authority, that they come to the council simply as a, uh, word.
Consideration.
Yeah, what did you say, Brian?
Curse.
Yes, thank you. Um, that that's, but I don't know that that's correct information. Uh, I think as long as the council has control, because originally what you as a council was told that their budget would be reduced.
Yeah.
And it was one year, and then it has gradually climbed back up, so that becomes taxpayers' money. So if you can find a way to fund it and not hurt yourself with the already... obligations that are in place, it makes sense.
You gotta have an account balance, and you couldn't sit there and not use it, therefore we might be as a fund master. No, we're using their ends up, the fuel sales, the hangar rounds, the, the, that a lot of sit there.
I think the purpose always was to try to make the airport, uh, so to speak, self-sufficient, not taxpayer-funded, but...
That's a way to do it, just, you know, in one way, all your excess funds that are sitting there, they can use it for something.
All those for approval of Resolution twenty seventeen dash five, creation of a reserve or depreciation account for the purpose of capital improvements or replacements out of the operating profits from the operation of the airport. Second. We have a motion, the second to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash five, as was directed by title by Councilman Traeger. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we'll move next to Resolution twenty seventeen dash six, read by title alone, Indiana Housing Community Development Authority, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Area Two of City of Delphi. The purpose of this resolution is accepted here from I.H.T.W.A. for owner-occupied rehabilitation Phase Two. Does the council have any questions regarding this resolution?
Well, I think just from the history standpoint, um, this has kinda been a, a long time coming to get this finally happening, and I, I think people were notified early on, and, and then they almost thought, "Well, nothing was going on," so I think we either need to get it going or forget it, but, so, since the money is there, I guess we need to get it going.
Do we have any further discussion about Resolution twenty seventeen dash six?
Well, uh, Jake, you're like the overseer, or you're in this?
So, start development is the overseer on this grant, they're the grant administrator, that's what we're paying for. Um, Jake and I will be helping them if need be, um, with, because I think they've got, uh, they wanna get between ten and twelve applications in, I think they've got six that need, uh, financial qualifications, um, so they're gonna be coming back into town, maybe next month, to canvass and put out hangers, but Jake and I might help them on that. Um, but I think they have a good track record, started on the does, I know they're doing this currently in Camden as well, um, I think courtesy, I heard that it was their first time administering the OLO.